Ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. This is the September Meeting of the developed Alhous County's Attorney Board of Appeals. For those of you that have never been here for one of our meetings, we do request that you sign in in the back on the sheet on the table. We also ask that you silence your phones, please, so we don't have to deal with phones ringing or texts coming and going, such as that. The way we'll operate, I will call each case by case number and case name. Staff will come to the lectern, give us the request. There will potentially be discussions, questions among board members and staff. Once we have determined that we understand what's being requested, then I will ask if there's anyone here in support of this application, or if the applicant is here and would like to give us any additional information. If there are multiple people in support, we would like to know that you are here, but we don't want to hear the same thing over and over again. If what you feel like we need to take under consideration has already been presented, please don't hammer us with it. Once we're satisfied and we've heard the prosides, if there's any discussions or questions or answers, then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition, or if there are any persons here that have questions about what is being requested. Would please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, and tell us what your question is, or what your concerns are. There will potentially be questions and answers among the board members, again, concerning what's being presented. Once we feel like we have heard from both sides, then we will attempt to render a decision here today, which is what normally occurs. However, if the board in its decision feels like people need to talk, information may be lacking or something, we do have the option to postpone action until the next regular schedule meeting. If there are multiple people or multiple presentations, please give us what you want us to take under consideration, fully and concisely, so that we don't end up with a rebuttal and a re-rebuttal back and forth. We want to try to knock it out as best we can the first time around. Okay, first case we will call is Alhous County Case VAR 2018-15, Sylvia Shaw and Dolores Oliver at 3768 Crump Road in Valdosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. This variance came into our office through the middle of a subdivision plant. I have the property on the territory Sylvia and Dolores Shaw. They contacted this Barbara here in the southeast, who is surveying every bar, to split this large tract of land evenly into two tracts. They came out with a design to create two 6.8 acre truck, track one on the north, track two on the south. The ladies are submitting this plaque via the family ties option, and the family ties option will give our citizen two options as it pertains to access. We can't meet the criteria of option one, which requires that each lot has an individual 60 feet minimum of road credit, so we have opted for option two, which will allow us to use a shared drive of 60 feet wide, as long as that drive commenced from a county maintained road. And in this case, our county maintained road will be Madison Highway. According to the language that I have from the ladies, this 30-foot easement strip has been in place for 45 years. The Sylvia just referred to me that they're dead, actually, in agreement that access. So that's why we're here. The variance in itself says that each lot needs to have 60 foot on a county maintained road. Track one, this is, and we'll get my napkin changed. So please forgive me, I did this earlier, but I can't find one that I can, so it looks like track two has the frontage on Madison Highway. That frontage again, now in 30 feet, and the code requires that it's 60, so for track two, we're asking for a variance of 30 feet. If we draw the line the way that the ladies want us to, going through like straight down the middle of that property, that is going to leave track one with no frontage at all. And so we're asking for the full 60 feet variance on track one.
Did you say track two has 30 feet? So you're counting the driveway and the frontage?
Yes, yes. Well, the code says as long as the access commenced on the county maintained road, which does through Madison, that 30 feet, the way that it's drawn, will go with lot two.
Let me ask you this, I'm on your road, this road, this road.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this a county maintained road?
No, it is a private access.
Is there any language, and this may be a question for Barbara in a minute. In fact, I'll wait till we get to it. Now, is there any other questions or discussions from the board at this point?
I got one more. I dragged back to where the road dead ends at track two and track one, where you could take a right and go down to track one. But I didn't know how far it went. There was some dog park, and I didn't want to pass too much of a light.
How far did they have to maintain that road?
Well, I would rather this Barbara assist us with that.
Any other questions or any other discussions at this time? Thank you, we may need you again in a minute. Is there anyone here, would either one of you like to speak, or Barbara, I've got a question, maybe Nancy, you've got a question?
Barbara here in southeast of the corner of six foot one of the common street. As she said, that's been a great nightmare for us, because I remember how little school we wanted to have, always in that. And this was, of course, air property, and after many years of in-family disagreement and fighting, finally that option off was no longer agree on anything. And the two sisters put together a property act. So she said it's only 30 feet, there was only 30 feet over the handle that was going there forever. They do maintain interest into their own property. They own their own homes, they have no plans on building, they resell out to farmers, so it's going to stay for them.
Okay, my question is going to be, is there anything recorded that specifies that track one and track two both have access through this, in case we have more family disputes down the road for some reason?
When this plant is recorded, it shows it on the plan, that it's a 30-foot access easement that goes into both tracks.
Okay, that's the question, I just wanted it on the record, did this plant get marked and that way one can?
Yes, if it was already there to handle, and the way this is designed, the track number two has the actual road frontage and easement, the track number one has easement already existing on it that goes by maintenance house, because it's got one inch of it there.
Okay. Nancy, did that help with your question, or are you still got a question? Any other questions or discussions? Is there anything else you would like to bring to us, Barbara, anything y'all would like to bring to us?
Do you have a second? I got a question.
Ma'am, hold on just a second. Are we done?
I'm done.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone else here in support of this application? Okay, all right.
I've got a question.
Yeah, ma'am, please come to the lectern, I need your name and address for the record.
I'm Janice White, 2680 Tushen Road, but I own a shop right next to these people.
Okay, and your question is?
If they get a variance, does that mean they get part of my property?
No, ma'am.
So they just going to get the 30, the road that's already there, right?
The existing 30-foot road that goes in is theirs now. The county says they're supposed to have 60 feet. The variance that they are asking for is that that variance be reduced from 60 to 30, which is the existing, for one of the lots, lot number two, and that the variance be for lot number one, that it is allowed to use that same 30 foot and not have an additional 30 foot for it. There will be no property, nobody's taking any property from anybody or anything like that.
I was following in that.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone else here that has questions, or is in opposition, or have a problem with what is being questioned? Would there be any response to your office?
Yes, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there any other questions or discussions? Does anybody need additional information? Can I entertain a motion on this request?
Would you approve the variance as presented citing criteria D?
I have a motion on the floor to render the request as presented citing criteria of D. Do I have a second? I have a second, good quarter one. All in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? You now, just good luck with it, ladies. Hope everything works out. Okay, next case we will call is Alhous County Case VAR 2018-16, Tanika Christopher on behalf of Shelby Stovall and 6002 North Oak Street Extension.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to acknowledge all of the parties that are involved in this one. So I do have this Tanika Christopher, she's the acting realtor on behalf of the landowner. I have Mr. Matthew Enman with EMC Engineering. He is the land professional for the possible buyer of this property should this variance go through. And that young lady's name is Ms. Carrie Gresham, and she's with Grimlock. They are here, through the board, having questions outside of whatever policy presentation. This property is located 6002 North Oak Street Extension. What we have here is, and I believe that a rezoning case was held on this property, and I believe that it was in 2015, so as you give me, I should turn that. It is, a rezoning took place in 2015. They did grant the rezoning request, but they put two conditions on the property. And one of the conditions pertaining to buffering, and the other pertaining to a specific use. The second condition said that there could be no family, personal care homes, group personal care homes, or community. What they are asking to do should, what Ms. Gresham's company would like to do, they would like to establish a 72-bed assisted living facility. I'm sorry. They are going before the Alhous County Board of Commissioners this afternoon to accept that request for giving this use, going before the commissioners this afternoon to accept that condition if you were to offer the property. Outside of that, this is a commercially zoned property that is surrounded by commercially zoned property on the east side. I have training, Presbyterian Church, which is on CC. On the west side, there's the Northway Office Complex slash Apartments. On the north, we have the apartments of the Northway Office Complex, and then also a portion of new Covenant Christian Church, which surrounds this property. That's basically what I have in a nutshell. The variance, we're here to, well, I'm sorry, the actual variance on this property is to setbacks. I got too involved with the other, I'm giving you that. But the actual variance on this case is for setbacks. The design standards require a 100-foot side yard and rear yard setback. They can meet the rear yard requirement, but no issue, is the side yard that they tend to have a problem. And they're asking to reduce that side yard from 100 to 50 feet for both sides. TRC staff, they look it over, none of my department has any, didn't have any issues with them doing so, and this is what we present to you today.
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions?
I can have a whole bunch of questions.
Okay.
Do you know why the commission made the, no, I went back and did the video for that, and the commission voted unanimously to put that commission on? Do you know why they didn't want a personal care home?
No, ma'am, I've been hearing of the commissioner that made the decision, why the conditions placed on the property, I don't know.
I think this will get you insight on that in a few minutes.
Okay. And then according to this site plan that we have here, it looks like there's a driveway that goes right along the eastern border with a dumpster pad at the back. Is that in this, what would be the setback?
Is a line, what do you ask?
This driveway would be in?
Is a line within this setback? It looks like it would be, Maggie, can you help me with that, please?
Yes, would you like me to come back?
Yes.
Can I get your name and address again for the records?
It's okay, we'll pass it out to the board. Can you ask about the dumpster pad, I'm sorry, Maggie Enman, EMC here, same same room. The dumpster pad and the location of that, they could be modified and changed. We're planning to move those actually out of that setback. A dry community setback could just become accessible structures and structures, and that's what we're probably having a concern about. And just the way the property's shaped, the primary reason for the request, the way the property's shaped, if you look at it, it's much longer than it was. And those side setbacks, you start getting 100 feet of each setback line, only about 125 feet in the middle to actually build a building. A building this size just simply won't fit, you have to do a lot larger property, and there's money available in the area that they're trying to serve with this facility. But that's the reason for the setback. No, it's about, but they're just, at the end of the drive, we can modify the drive and pull it out of that separate line. But all they're trying to do is get rid of a building that actually fit on the property.
The way you're going, what?
It was like, it was moving in, moving in to the interior problem. The dumpster pad slide towards the interior problem.
It's not that empty with the building?
No, that drive's running back.
No, not the dumpster pad, the driveway going back and forth.
The drive's a lot of the setback. Drive's a lot of the setback, it could just become structures.
It's a little hard to tell from the scale of these drawings, but it appears to me that on the drawing, even the building itself is over the 50-foot side setback, just by a little bit, but given the scale, I mean, that could be a couple of feet.
It's about a foot out in the drawing, and the architect was just pulling it up just a little bit, and there's a little bit of hall space we can give up and setback, and they're going to get survived, so it will fit. We just, before we set them off, we're going to go to the architect, we want to say, hey, can we at least do this, before we say, you know, hey, we can find the foot out of this fall, request it.
Deborah, is a 100-foot setback, is that, is that common? What would that be, that was a commercial building?
It's definitely, yeah, it is definitely not common, making it in any of our zoning districts. And I tried to, I didn't have a lot of time to follow myself to this, but I wanted to try to go through that code, try to justify that question to you. Only thing that came to mind was possibly that the consultant was thinking an assisted living facility maybe as a critical use facility, and perhaps they were thinking in terms of load, generally, you know, when they were combining, split together, to come up with that number for that use.
If you were going to put an office building that was not an assisted living facility there, what would the setback be?
Twenty, I believe.
And just to fill all of that, Lando Place is 20 to 25 foot facilities, and it's got residential neighborhood, like, I have some residential, pro helps, all those about the same, and they're 15 to 20 foot, all existing facilities, all the ones in town, and this type of neighborhood. You know, there's not anything, that's really something that just came about in last ordinance revision, that 100-foot setback. And speaking of that, this is the first one that's come along since they had the new, we've had the new wardens in place, and it's just, it's just one that's just really a lot more strict than we used to have in place.
Is there any plan to fence the site in the way, given that it is an assisted, assisted care home, holding patients?
Not fence the entire site, would not be the plan.
There's a couple of courtyards on the bottom side, that would be the one, if there were, you know, outside, on the bottom side page, that courtyard would be in there, they would possibly fence it.
The courtyard would be fenced.
Okay.
I have a question for Deborah, what's the buffering in this zoning?
Another awesome question that I do not calculate. I do know how to calculate, ma'am, but I do not. I believe the resulting condition referred to buffering on the northern portion of the western, the western being, is that the Northway Complex?
Right, the condition was that in the previous rezoning, that that buffer had to stay in place, and how many feet was it?
30 feet.
30?
Unstirred, on each side, 30 feet on each side.
If you look at the, if you look at the residential portion of the west.
Yes.
If you look at the, if you consider the goes in on this, on this, this is the end of the residential section here. We would maintain the buffer there, but not with commercials, like, residential or commercial, we would maintain the buffer.
Doesn't the rezoning require, that rezoning from 2013, it required the maintenance of the buffer?
Unstirred buffer on the north end and on the west, depending on what requirement these require.
So that uses against church?
Yes, against commercial.
Right, but in the paperwork that we have, there is no request for variance to the buffer, so they will have to be code.
Right, well, I'm just trying to figure out, if they're asking for change to the setback, is that going to be bumping into the buffer that they're required to keep? That was what I was trying to get to. No, okay, with 30 feet, okay.
But I can't tell you how to calculate it, if you wanted to.
Any other questions or discussions?
Dear Barbara, so there's no buffer that's required on the east side or the west. I know we've already got this established buffer that they're supposed to maintain.
The east side is a church, which is on CC, so no, ma'am, a buffer will not be required there. The northern line, I know there's R 21, and then there's that residential PP, which they are requesting in the rezoning, well, which they stipulated in the rezoning, that there will be a buffer implemented across that line. And then there will be a buffer on the portion of the church side, the church has a commercial zoning as well.
One of the plans, I know that I saw where there's supposed to be some widening of that road. How, do you know anything about when this might be on the, in the works, and how would it affect this piece of property?
No, ma'am, I don't have any information on that. I can't come home, but I got heard the county engineer speak on this proposed project, but I don't have any specific.
Our drives are playing the line, we're relying on a full line or more. We can just shorten that tape, that bed in between ours, our drives are just on there, and they can do any adjustments, or if actually we can come.
Well, their setback is based upon where the road is now, not where it will be sometime later.
Any other questions, any other discussions? Is there anyone here in support that would like to speak?
No, Mr. Matthew pretty much summed it up for us.
Maybe this is my latest of just summer projects, and we'll do the best we can.
We maintain the buffer there, but not with commercials, residential, residential, but residential with maintenance buffer.
Doesn't the rezoning require, that rezoning from twenty fifteen, it required the maintenance of the buffer?
Unstirred buffer on the north end and on the west. Every one requirement.
So that means this against church?
Yes, against commercial.
Right. But in, in the paperwork that we have, there is no request for variance to the buffer, so they will have to be towed.
Right, well, I'm just trying to figure out, if they're asking for change to the setback, is that going to be bumping into the buffer that they're required to keep? That was what I was trying to get to. No, okay, with thirty feet. Okay.
But I can't tell you how to calculate it if you wanted to.
That's okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussions?
Oh, I'm not sure. Dear Barbara, ma'am, so there's no buffer that's required on the east side or the west. I know we've already got this established buffer that they're supposed to maintain.
The east side is a church, which is on C C, so no, ma'am, a buffer will not be required there. The northern line, I know there's R twenty-one, and then there's that residential P B, which they are requesting in the rezoning. Well, we say stipulated in the rezoning that there will be a buffer implemented across that line. And then there will be a buffer on the portion of the church side, which the church has a commercial zone as well.
One of the plans, I know that I saw where there's supposed to be some widening of that road. How, do you know anything about when this might be on the, in the works? And how would it affect this piece of property?
No, ma'am, I don't have any information on that. I can't come home, but I got heard the county engineer speak on this proposed project, but I don't have any specific information.
If...
Our drive's a plain line, if we were lining a full line or more, we can just shorten that tape that day in twenty hours. Our drive just on there, and they can do, maybe just, or eventually we can come.
Well, their setback is based upon where the road is now, not where the road will be sometime later.
That's true.
Any other questions, any other discussions? Is there anyone here in support that would like to speak?
No, Mr. Matthew pretty much summed it up for us.
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe this is my latest of similar projects, and we'll do the best we can in actual reporting. This is one of the other projects I've had, one of the other elevations I've had of a similar type facility, and what it looked like. Uh...
Uh, all of the...
Oh, Deborah.
Yes. I'm trying to get used to this, Jeremy, I'll forgive you.
Okay, is there anyone here in opposition to this request? Or is there anyone here that has questions about what is being requested? Was there any contact to your office?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen...
I'm so curious, why was the condition of no personal care homes?
And I called on you to enlighten us a little bit about this.
Well, I'll do my best, yeah. I'm sorry, Llans County Commissioner. March twenty fifteen, there was a condition put on this. But like I was speaking with Chair Slaughter this afternoon, after a couple of y'all reached out to me, we banded back and forth, and there was some speculation, this property, I guess, was gonna be developed. Thankfully, there was no real plan for the property during the rezoning request that came before us in March two thousand fifteen. However, there was some, some behind-the-scenes conversation about the possibility of a youth-type detention facility. There was, several words were used to describe what possibly may go there. So I think this was just simply a result of a non-objection from the property owner who under his own request, and the condition was applied there that, hey, no detention facility, no. And that became, well, it's just a, you know, no, what's the term that we're using in the...
The kind of, the personal care homes.
So I think, I really think it was as simple as that. And, you know, I've spoken with several other commissioners and they remember it basically the same way. So, I mean, I feel like, you know, for a commissioner, I can speak for them, but we don't have any issue with this.
Thank you, sir.
And as far as the road improvement, we don't know what is going to happen. We know that some of the county workers have been, the properties have to be sold, so forth. Maybe we're a few years away from now, and I don't feel like it would be fair to take any of that into consideration when you're making a decision for these votes.
Any other questions, discussions? Anybody give you a motion? I'll make a motion, okay? To approve the marriage. As presented, as cited. I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Holt, to grant the request as presented citing criteria D. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Ms. Alvarado, all in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck with it, please make it work out, look to it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Deborah.
Yes, thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, the next case we will call, City of Valoster Case, application two thousand eighteen dash oh six. New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, seven oh nine West Gordon Street.
Jeremy, just a minute, we've got powerful lights. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Your home city case is for New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. In the Arctic Thoning District, on the corner of West Gordon Street and Gordon Street. They are looking to build a new sanctuary. The church is currently existing. They were in Charmontown World Appeal in about two thousand and six. You heard them for front yard setbacks along Gordon. You heard requests for western property line setback variances, as well as southern property line variances for the facility as you see it now. Variances were granted, that's four and twelve years later. They are ready to do some additional updating in terms of removing the existing sanctuary and building a new sanctuary. We would permit from, aware of two thousand and six, the variances were created. Those appear to be specifically for the existing facility, not including any new structures. No new, no proposed plan was, was, would that show any other facilities, any other potential concept plans or any other additions? So the variances in two thousand and six are purely for the side as you see it now. So that's what they're in front of you now for front yard variances on Gordon Street. The property is on Harst Six. The front yard setbacks for Harst Six, Gordon Street is the front yard, front yard is twenty feet, front yard setback is twenty feet. They are proposing to approach that setback eleven feet to be flush with the existing building that's, that's gonna be left. The new facility, the new sanctuary will be flush with that existing, what's left, existing loss. So they are asking for a variance of eleven feet, so it'd be nine feet from the new sanctuary to Gordon Street, that property line. We have to do a request, we're ready to approve it. Just a side note, the expansion also needed what we call conditional use permit or C D. It did go from plain admission to city council. City council, they approved it, it has to go with the conditions. And what?
New condition, what condition?
Yes, sir. They approved it unanimously, unanimously, with three conditions. The first made an approval showing grade in front church facility. With related accessory uses in Arctic Thoning, with a maximum total building floor area not exceeding twenty thousand square feet, reductions in the minimum building setback requirement shall be as approved by Zanyor and Fields. The new parking lot shall be the same plan, same lighting requirements of the Melton Guard, Southern Non-Residential Parking Lots. All sunlight shall be the regular way through surrounding residential properties. And the third last condition was that this can be, would expire after five years from the date of approval if no building permit has been issued for any new building or existing building to be expanded by that date. Just so you know, they can submit plans, plans whatever cross this paper.
Okay. Any, any other questions, any other discussions? Basically, they're, they're going to put the new construction in alignment with the old building that they are maintaining. So it's not gonna be any closer, no further, it's all gonna be aligned.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone here in support of this application?
My name is Jimmy Cole. I'm an architect working on this project. My office is located at eighteen oh six Plum Street. There are some of the members of the church here and the general contractor, Roger Leach, that's here also. As they said, back in two thousand and six, they did come and get a front yard setback. And it was our intentions back then that they knew one day it would build a sanctuary. And we designed that building, which was basically a sunnysuit room, that it would one day be part of a sanctuary building. The roofline of that building was designed so that it would extend and create a gable roof, by that, as a shed roof would look to. And that was, like I say, that was designed. And it's always been our intentions that we would align with the form of that building with this future sanctuary. I'd be glad to answer any questions that y'all have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. And I'm assuming all the church members in, in support of all of them. Is there anyone here in opposition or does anyone have questions about what is being requested? Was anything brought to the office, phone, walk-ins?
We've had no contact.
Any other questions, any other discussions from the board at this time? Can I entertain a motion on this request?
I make a motion that we approve the variance as presented, finding it consistent with the variance review criteria and the mic.
I have a motion, yeah, I got that. I have a motion on the floor for Ms. Portman, do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck, all, make it look good for me. Okay. Minutes. I didn't see anything, additions, deletions, corrections, substitutions. Or anybody else have anything that I might have missed? Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck, I'm gonna stay on that. Okay, you got that? Okay, any other new business we need to discuss?
Something that comes to mind as chairman is, you want to start thinking in terms of chair, vice chair, that discussion that takes on speaking, or if you want to wait until another member? We have one case.
We have one case as well.
Start a conversation.
We can start it next month, so please put it on the agenda so that my old red hair is gonna forget it. Any other old business, anything we need to discuss? Congratulations, on your little gift.
Thank you.
For those that haven't seen it, you can look at the picture.
I got a new grand baby.
Congrats.
Okay, then we have nothing else at this point, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for your attention and your assistance. See ya. Relax.
That's a quick.
Yeah.